Good evening, everybody. It is now 7:04, so I will call to order the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor McCormick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start tonight's meeting with the approval of the minutes from the September 2nd Budget and Business Meetings of the Board, as well as the September 9th, 2025 Budget Meeting. Are there any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any public discussion or comment on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have one proclamation this evening, and I will turn it over to Supervisor Thompson.
Thank you. Be it hereby proclaimed, whereas Lower Paxton Township extends its sincere gratitude to Dr. Charles Stewart for leading the significant revitalization effort to restore the historic property located at 100 Elmwood Drive for a renewed community purpose fostering youth development through the Harrisburg Area Police Athletic League. Whereas Dr. Stewart's multifaceted accomplishments through HAPL, Harrisburg Area Police Athletic League, from 2023 to present include reopening the youth center, offering a safe and supportive hub for children, teens, and families, establishing the baseball field for practice and league play, reclaiming an abandoned public space for a community park, and implementing the mentoring through sports programs and youth education programs. Whereas, the organization's exceptional community service through the Shop With a Cop program at Christmas each year has impacted over 120 youth and engaged 75 law enforcement officers from local, county, and state agencies in meaningful youth mentorship in our community. And local families further benefit from these positive relationships between youth and law enforcement year-round through sports and enrichment programs such as cooking, creative arts, and podcasting. Now, therefore, be it, and now it is hereby proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Lower Paxton Township, Dolphin County, Pennsylvania, that hereby, that we hereby honor and express our sincere appreciation to Dr. Charles Stewart for his deep personal commitment to building a center of hope where young people can learn life skills and develop confidence in their futures with the support of community partners, local leaders, law enforcement agencies, and their families. Approve this... Okay. We have been trying to do this since November, so this is signed the 18th day of November, Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors, signed by Laura Kurtz, Chair.
I did a push for my kids.
Yes, yes, sir. Would you, would you like to come and make a comment?
Yeah, I can make it.
All right, okay.
We do appreciate this recognition. Our kids are amazing. We try to always set a great example for them, and I hope that... We appreciate this honor from the board supervisors, recognizing our young people and what we do. We have great parents. I'd like to thank the parents that has been sticking with us for years now. It's not, it's not easy for them to go work all day, especially sometimes. They put in a great effort, and these are some amazing kids. I've had these kids for at least five years. I've had them most for about two to three years. Any kids want to say anything? Huh? They better play ball, guys. Anything better than playing ball? Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Charles.
Yes, sir. Nice job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
to the... And we very much look forward to your leadership in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. If you'd like to step up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and limit your remarks to five minutes. Thank you. Mr. Packer.
John Packer, 6723, Delaware. The last meeting I was unable to attend, but I did get to watch it. During that meeting, there were public comments concerning the Islamic faith spoken in relation to religion. I'd like to make several points concerning his comments.
As he did, I will also take a little bit of liberty at the end of this to address my Christian beliefs according to the Bible. I would like to open with a Bible verse from 1 Corinthians 16, 13, 14. Be on guard, stand firm in the faith, be courageous, be strong, and do everything in love. At that meeting, the chair opened, and she said the public comment by stating, stated that comments were to pertain to township matters. After listening to his five minutes, I did not hear anything that pertained to township matters. The guidelines specifically state, and number six, which they're sitting over there for everybody to look at, public comment must pertain directly to Lower Paxton Township and its municipal government. As far as I could tell, he addressed no matter concerning any township business. But he did raise several points that I believe are concerning to the township and its residents. As a former law enforcement officer, I'm greatly concerned in regards to his statement concerning Sharia law, and I quote from his speech, "Sharia law is nothing more than providing basic human rights, just like the U.S. Constitution does, so it's nothing to be afraid of. On this, I must wholly, wholeheartedly, and emphatically disagree. I've read and researched much, and there's no comparison, correlation, or compatibility between Sharia law and our U.S. or our state constitutions." Conversely, in regards to the human rights, it's the exact opposite, and it restricts rights, especially towards women. And it condones criminal acts that are a direct violation of our state and federal statutes. I'll refrain from mentioning any of them because some of them are quite grotesque. So I implore you to do your own research and reading on the matter. His presentation to me is nothing more than a Trojan horse, trying to dress up and make presentable what I feel is both evil and unlawful. More directly, in regards to our U.S. Constitution, the bedrock of our country and its founding documents was based in large part by the founding fathers on their firm belief in God and the importance for his guidance in the formation of our country. I'll read you two quotes, first from John Adams, and they're both in part. "Our Constitution was made only for a religious and moral people; it is wholly inadequate for the government of any other." Second, from Noah Webster, "The morals, principles, and precepts contained in Scripture ought to form the basis of all our civil constitutions and laws." There are many, many more from many different people, founding fathers, and the like, that, you know, will give you similar statements. Make no mistake that the Islamic faith is not like the Christian faith that we are founded upon. They do not seek to assimilate and follow our laws, customs, or beliefs. They seek to impose theirs on us, and that is their goal, to take over this country one community at a time. And again, I implore you to do your own research, to look at places such as Dearborn, Michigan, Minneapolis of Minnesota, and other communities. We cannot let what is taking place there happen here or anywhere. So this is addressed to the current board and the oncoming board. I ask you to be on your guard and be aware of what's going on. Lastly, in regards to my beliefs as a Christian, and I believe going by the profile of all the current supervisors, you're all affiliated with one local church or another. My biggest issue during his comments is with his depiction and description of Jesus. He states that he is a prophet, just the same as many other prophets listed in the Bible, and his statement that some leader of his is the current Messiah and the second coming of Jesus, which I have no idea how he came up with that. That actually should shake the soul of every Bible-believing Christian. Jesus was much, much more than a prophet, and as we are celebrating the Christmas season, let us remember what is it about and who he truly is. He is the Son of God. He came to this earth as a baby in a manger. He lived a sinless life. He died on the cross. He rose again. He ascended into heaven. He is seated at the right hand of the Father, and he will return again one day. Again, I implore you, stand firm in the faith. Lastly, in Matthew, loose translation is that if we deny Jesus here on earth, he will deny us before the Father in heaven. So I thank you for your indulgence, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Packer.
Mr. Packer.
Mr. Packer, I applaud your courage in coming forward and saying what you said. I left that meeting that night having regret that I didn't ask this gentleman a couple of questions, many of the questions you might have brought up in what you said. I regretted my silence after the fact. I agree with you that his dissertation did not have a place here in the public forum. As I listened to the gentleman, I was reminded of the Bill of Rights and the promise of the Bill of Rights of freedom of religion. But having served in the Middle East and having been proselytized by many people who believe in the faith of Islam, I will tell you, this is the one thing that they believe absolutely. They believe that they have the book. The book is the Quran. They believe that they have an obligation to share the book with everyone in the world. They will... A true Muslim, a true follower of Muhammad, a true follower of Islam, will tell you that Sharia law is the supreme law of the land. There can be no law supreme over Sharia law. In my opinion, if someone truly holds to the belief of Sharia law, then they cannot put their hand up and swear an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And if they are unable, incapable of swearing an oath to support the Constitution of the United States, I don't know how... I'm not the smartest guy to stand upright and speak, and many people in the audience will agree with that statement. But I will tell you, I don't know how followers of the religion of Islam can become citizens in the United States, and that's, that's a concern to me. And I applaud you for your courage in coming forward today, tonight, and I regret my silence during that dissertation from that gentleman. I agree with you, not that he doesn't have the right to his, to his religious beliefs, I believe in that, First Amendment to the Constitution, freedom of religion. I do not think that this forum was the correct place to have that speech. I agree with you, and I thank you for your courage in standing up and saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McCormick. Are there any other public comments at this time? Please.
My name is Ronald Snyder. I live at 5938 Avis Lane in Lingelstown. And my problem is with the trash and the recyclables. I've lived at that address for nearly 45 years. When I first moved in, I had to pay my own trash guy to come, or else it wouldn't get picked up. And then we had different people come, but since Penn Waste, or the Penn Waste has come, I've had nothing but problems. First of all, Avis Lane is, I'm not sure if it's a road that the township owns or who owns it, that's always been an argument. I know initially, they did come back and plow my street. I did work as a contractor for the Pennsylvania Turnpike in Communications, and I'd have to get out at who knows what time of the day because I was involved in their communications for the radio system and the old microwave network. But this thing really came to head last Monday. My trash was out Sunday afternoon. I put it out at halftime of the first football game on Sunday, which is what I do every week. And Monday morning, usually around 7:30, the truck, the small truck, now that Ms. Jill got us changed over, so instead of the big truck that says they can't come back there, they bring a small truck. It didn't show up. So in late in the afternoon, I called, and they said that the truck was broke down. Well, I could understand that. They said they'll be around tomorrow. Well, if you remember what happened Monday night, is we got a snowstorm. They didn't show up on Tuesday, even though the UPS man delivered a package. My Amazon delivery got made, and I even had a FedEx with insulin delivered on that same Tuesday in the morning when the roads were worst. So we called again on Tuesday to the township office again, and they said they'd let us know that, just leave it out. Nobody came Wednesday, even though Wednesday afternoon, the Penn Waste people called my wife on her phone, saying, is your trash out because they're coming to pick it up? They never showed up. It was picked up yesterday morning. I don't think that's acceptable. I think somebody has to start watching what's going on and do follow-up on these problems because it's all over Facebook and other places about it's not getting picked up and it's not being done properly. I think that requires some leadership in your department that handles that. They're going to have to do some follow-up because this has been a problem ever since the contract changed.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. So your, your trash was picked up a week late?
Yeah, a week late, yeah.
Week and a day.
The thing that really got me aggravated was that they called in to make sure it was out on Wednesday when they said they were going to come, and then they never showed up anyway.
Right.
Okay.
And I knew from the prior week with the holiday and shifting back a week might have caused some issues as well.
Well, they said the truck was broke down on Monday. Okay? Then Tuesday, when I called, they said because of the snow, even though all kinds of other smaller vehicles could get back there. And then when they called Wednesday and said, is it still, you know, make sure it's out, and it's been out, then they don't show up. That's the point that really, I said, I'm going to the township meeting, so.
Well, thank you. And each time, please call the township office. I know that we do log these complaints. At some level, Mr. Gassar would be notified with the issues, and we will reach out to Penn Waste.
I think maybe somebody, you know, has to do a follow-up, maybe call back, did your trash get picked up, or something like that, to try to, to find out what's going on because I think their service has been really poor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Does anybody else have any public comment? Please.
My name is Matthew Nicewinder. I live at 4411 Venus Avenue. I live directly behind the Wise supermarket that they're currently remodeling, and they've been doing overnight construction, which has been very disruptive. If I may, I made a recording last night. This was at 3:10 in the morning. That's at my bedroom window. This has been going on for months, and it's my understanding from talking with the store managers. I called last night. There was a manager on site at 3:00, 3:30, 4:30, and I did actually speak to the Paul Anderson site foreman at 4:45 a.m., which I feel I shouldn't be having to do. And he said that they were instructed by Wise to do overnight construction. I called Wise. Their corporate office said that there's no overnight construction going on, so I'm getting different stories from everybody. You know, I don't, I feel like I should be able to sleep in my own home, so I just wanted some suggestions on what I should do, or...
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Gassar. I know we have a noise ordinance we can enforce, and complaints can be directed to...
My understanding, they shouldn't be doing construction overnight. Where there, it's my understanding, they probably shouldn't be doing construction overnight. I will get with the codes department tomorrow and see what we can do about that.
Okay. I did call the police a few times. I know one time, an officer did get them to halt. They were putting steel beams into a dumpster at 2:30 in the morning, which was quite jarring and loud.
That's noisy, yeah.
The other times, I believe, when the officers had arrived, the duration that they had waited, there was no activity going on. There is things going on behind the store, so it's like the back of my property and the back of their property. So there's machinery, trucks, you know, workers yelling, communicating. You heard the sawing and things. Again, that was 3:10 in the morning. It's just creating a lot of sleepless nights. It's affecting my work and health, and it's been going on for months, and my understanding it's going to continue from what they've told me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And sir, did you sign in on the sheet so we have your contact information, can reach out to you?
Yeah, I did call the township a couple of times. They referred me to the non-emergency line for the police, and I did call this morning, and someone was supposed to call me back, but no one ever did. But I will sign in.
Thank you very much. We'll look into that. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Miller, please.
William Miller, 4311. I think there's a start time, too, isn't there, Mr. Gassar? It's 7:00 a.m., no sooner. And it ends at night at a certain time, based on the amount of ambient light. But, yeah, that's unbelievable. I just have some brief ones. My association Colonial Crest, we're trying to get a response on, and they could have called today, so I may be remiss. But the speeding on Colonial Road with the overgrowth from Pendott is an issue for us. You know, you, I get down to Goose Valley to pull out, so I have the biggest sightline. If I have my trailer with me, you know, I have to be careful. There's been wrecks up there at Colonial. They come flying out from Avon and Long. It's just too many people using that road. Which brings me to, I know they're going to do something with the lights on Colonial. There was a 2005 Pendott study I've alluded to many times, and it, like Winfield and Valley were to be realigned. That light there would then not have to cycle nearly as much. There's things in the past history that some of us know, and we'd like to share, and Colonial is just getting so much overused. The light at Devonshire slash Crumbs Mill, it doesn't operate from both sides. The last guy on the west side has to fly across the road. You get one person through. The same thing's true out there at the Harley Place, and the re-timing of them is a thing. I just don't know how they, I never saw any, where, where the constituents provide input into this. Because we live it, we've complained about it, and we're hoping at least to have some higher speed enforcement on Colonial Road. I have a, I've talked, and I don't know, you might have, I don't know if you got my messages on this. We have individuals in the neighborhood and around the township, they're taking it upon themselves to pound in. You know what a T-post is? It's a quarter-inch-thick piece, they're for like cattle and sheep to hold them in. They're pounded in, I think some of your signage had them, I don't know. They're pounded in right next to the blacktop. So what is the distance, what is the right away from the blacktop back? Where can these people put these posts to keep people off their snow-covered yards? It's, I think, it's some kind of offense to create, to purposely create a hazard to cause damage. And we have an ordinance for everything, and I think, I really feel we need an ordinance that you can't put anything out there except the township uses breakaway delineators or fiberglass, you know, posted or drilled, they break off. I don't feel a resident should be able to pound a stake, and I have photos, some are hanging out into the roadway over, over the lip of the blacktop. I just don't think it's right, and some are cut off short. One guy had three-quarter-inch rebar with washers welded on, sticking out laterally. I've kept it quiet. I tried to get my neighborhood to work on it, and I just think, but I'm driving around, I'm seeing more of it. So I just think it's time for people to stop being negatively proactive in their own, for their own, for their own purpose.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, why, why, what's the purpose of that?
So people don't drive on their grass. But I know the township has, every road's different from the center line into the yard. That's township, I know it's township right away. So do we say you can put them back in there two feet? But someone's going, you're always going to slip. We have ice maybe coming in a week, right? So people might slide off. The roads are crowned for water drainage, so you slide off. So, so you deserve to have, and with aluminum and with the paint and, and the clear they put on, you're talking a scratch. A door's $3,000. So I don't feel it's appropriate, and I feel people, if they're doing that, they should be legally held accountable. It happens, I don't know what kind of citation they get, but I know there's permitting a violation law. I just don't know what it is. And I'm hoping, we talked about the extended yard waste. I mean, I know people, they didn't get their leaves up. I know they're doing them, they're out today. I'm not complaining about that at all. But I mean, if, if we had some year-round yard waste extended, there are a lot of people, they're going to haul their stuff out to the yard waste. And I would be willing myself to pay an extra fee to have that ability, to have a card reader, you know, a security-type gate. Other municipalities have it, and they're very, very hard on offenders, they cite them. I could live with that. I just, I just, I feel a lot of people want to get rid of their stuff, and our seasons are changing, and the snow caught us by surprise. It messed, it wasn't like they weren't doing it. And there's still ice in some of it, some got sun, you can suck them up. Some don't have sun, it's, it's going to be laying there. But I think a lot of people would load it up and haul it out there willingly if we had access different parts of the year. The other item I had on here with the T-post, I went out through Lingelstown. I, there's been no improvement from Pendott on the sidewalks from Garden to Cedar East. All that bad concrete, the heaved sidewalks, the broken sidewalks. I had no luck with Best Buy, sorry, Best Buy, heaved, broken, cracked. They haven't done anything to fix that. I've talked to three different managers in there over the years, and I, I don't know, I guess I could send it to Nick, but I mean, I mentioned it enough times, I've gone in there enough times, and then they don't clear them anyway. Most of Lingelstown, half of Lingelstown on the east side, as we promote the village, as we promote this neighborhood design development thing, they're going to connect Lingelstown to Ball Fair, or somehow they have to, if they're going to complete that type of design phase, which was approved. How are they going to walk? No sidewalk, and then the people aren't, I don't know how people cannot clean their sidewalks for others. In my neighborhood, you can't mow your grass, we come help you mow it. I would think there'd be people out there that would help their neighbor, if they're elderly, to clean their sidewalk. I just think it's something the township could promote on their webpage, keeping the sidewalks clean. It's a 24-hour notice, makes life easier for everybody. There are people I know personally, they work at Home Depot, they ride their bike to Home Depot. They ride those sidewalks that are covered in snow. And I feel there's an obligation for them to be maintained, A, maintained, and B, I don't know, just, just cleaned up. The last item, and I guess this was for the chief, if he was here tonight. At, at the Best Buy, there is an entrance. That Best Buy used to be an old Wise Market with rooftop parking, hard to imagine. And people, there were two signs inside that say, do not enter, not an exit, as you would go back out onto Devonshire. Those signs, one... Those signs, one's run over, trampled, and the other one's, you can't read it. I think with the increased traffic we have in the township, the increased use of that intersection, it needs a relook. I think it should be abandoned. It serves no purpose except for when I'm coming up there, and I run that a lot, I'm out a lot. And the people come flying out of there and they want to go behind Pep Boys, they're crossing four lanes of traffic. Our people just want to go, they want to head back to Route 22. There's no need for it. The same is true on the opposite side at the CVS. I just had it happen again. Last night, a person, they came barreling out of there, they wanted to get across all four lanes of Devonshire to go to Queen, behind Pep Boys and the Beer Place. Again, I don't know if people, you know, you put up your delineators and some of the delineators were run over, it's a constant maintenance thing for the township. Maybe people shouldn't be making the right, maybe that should only be an entrance there at CVS and the exit, which perpetuates, you know, this criminal behavior to go across four lanes of traffic. And I mean, I'm, it happens so often. And all of you also have areas that you know where it happens. These are the ones that I see. These are the ones I can share and get an honest opinion of what's going on. It could be a good moneymaker with a camera, but cameras are expensive and then that's more court time. There's a lot of other hidden costs with that. I would simply block off both of them as a traffic hazard there for traffic safety. And you have the numbers on the accidents and things, I don't know, but I, there's always something going on, there's always somebody banged up and beat up. And I think it simply needs to end as we try to streamline and refine our traffic. The last thing was out of Conway with the dirt. I wouldn't mind being part of that. The gentleman that comes and speaks all the time about his homes and the decibels you want at home, I don't know if he's part of that. And Eric Kessler, who has discussed with me many times, we just talked today, about taking the dirt from the sewers. You take the dirt out, you get that engineered solution, you come back so far from the walkway, it gives you a sidewalk down Conway to connect with the sidewalks that were, had waivers now. We need to get down to the new park. This is what all this is about. Safe passage alongside of the yard fill, a high mound of the dirt we're paying to haul away. And then creating a berm that's engineered for sound and then the sidewalk for safety. And then you use your automated gates to control Penn Waste from going in there to crack the dawn. I know in the summer it's hot and it's unruly, but you know, they want to do their job. But if it's going to disturb the constituents and the neighbors there, then it probably has to be controlled till 7:00. And no better way than with door-type control devices to allow that. And then people would have a walkway the whole way down as you put money into Conway and redo the basketball courts. You're going to have safe walkways the whole way through there. And again, with our berm, our barriers to keep people safe from the traffic on the other side, I don't know what we're doing with that dirt, but Eric Kessler, I applaud him for, he keeps pushing this and I keep pushing it and he just can't be here with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Miller. We will continue to look into these issues.
Thank you.
We're taking notes. Appreciate your comment. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay. All right, we will move on to chair and board member comments. Are there any comments from the board?
I have comments.
Okay. Supervisor Thompson?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion of adopting Act 94 compensation rates for townships of the second class to become effective January 1, 2026. May I have a second? So let me give you a little more information. On the November 10th agenda, we had a, let me get it because I want to be very exact. We had a resolution to adopt Act 94 pay rate increase. We want to have a discussion on that for the second-class township code adjustment to supervisors' compensation so that the new board that's coming in in 2026 gets to take advantage of the increased rate for township populations of 35,000 or more. Currently, the rate is set at about population, about 15,000. So we had it on the agenda previously, but the meeting was canceled. So I would just like to have an opportunity to revisit that and get that on the agenda. I've been talking to the township manager and we can schedule, it'll be a special meeting. Mr. Gossett, when would the meeting have to occur so that we could post the advertisements in a sufficient timely, in a timely manner?
Yes, the earlier, the earliest we could get any ordinance advertised would be, likely be Thursday. And that wouldn't be enough time to do the, to adopt the ordinance on the 16th, so you would have to set a special meeting to do that. And my recommendation would have been the 23rd, if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay. So that's what I'm asking the board to do. Give me a second on that motion to add it to the agenda. We could discuss, discuss it some tonight, but we could continue the discussion at the December 23rd meeting, Mr. Gossett?
We'd have to schedule, we'd have to advertise the meeting.
Okay.
There is no meeting on the 23rd.
Right, right, I understand. You said that would be the earliest, right? So...
Yeah, because the next, the seven days would be the next Thursday, you wouldn't want to have a meeting on that Friday. So my recommendation would have been that, yes.
And I'm doing this on behalf of the newly electeds. It's something that I wouldn't benefit from, but you all have been doing this work for a number of months, so you know all the work and all the time and effort that we put in to this position, a rate increase would be appropriate.
Supervisor Thompson, I have a couple of questions before we proceed.
Okay.
You are asking this board to consider pay increases for the supervisor-elect, starting their terms in January, correct?
Correct.
What is the current salary of a supervisor?
The current salary is about, it's in the $5,450 range.
Correct, around $5,000. What is the amount that you would be asking this board to increase that salary to next year?
According to the compensation rate sheet, it would go up to $8,385.
So a pretty significant increase percentage-wise.
I don't, based on... Based on the amount of work that we do, I don't, I don't think it's a significant increase. It's probably, I know the exact number, it's like $698 from about $353.
Approximately 60% pay increase.
I have a couple of comments. I will not be seconding this motion in. I do not take the salary of a supervisor, I donate it back to the township. I don't believe that anybody that ran was running on having any expectation other than the salary that was presented to them. There are significant insurance benefits that are also available to township supervisors as well, that I understand they all could make available to themselves if they would like to. I also don't take the township benefits. I believe that this role is a volunteer role primarily. It is a public service role, it's not a job. I think when we make this a job for some people and provide compensation at a different level, it becomes something entirely different that people need as a livelihood. And I think that public service should be just that at the township level. So I will not second the motion. And there are two other supervisors that are permitted to second your motion.
All right, thank you. It's the $8,300 in comparison to the $5,450, it's not a salary, it's just a stipend. A lot of us put in a lot of work in terms of our roles. I've watched several board members attend various meetings, attend various events, do community outreach in terms of resolving citizens' concerns and complaints. So the $8,300, $85 is still just a stipend. And given the additional expenses that we all face, it would be very helpful to have that. And I agree with you, they did not run to get a salary, but it certainly does help when you are dealing with various life issues. For, most of us do not, most of us take the particular stipend. We're not in a situation where it's easy for us to go ahead and give it, donate it back to the township.
Please.
Dr. Stewart, 1440 Karen Drive. I appreciate that Ms. Thompson's standing up for this. And I tell you what, I'd do it for free. Actually, what I'm getting is probably going to go to Powell anyway. But I tell you what disturbs me, and maybe somebody can answer this, is that prior to the election, this was on an agenda. And then it wasn't on the agenda. So we didn't put it on the agenda the first time, or we didn't suggest it, so it had to come from you guys. It was on the agenda, you remember what day that was? Do you know, remember what day that was?
It was on the November 10th agenda.
Yeah, it was on the November 10th agenda and then after that it was taken off. So that was already there and that's probably why, that's the part that concerns me. So if somebody can explain that, it's satisfactory to me. I don't care about the money, I got money. And like I said, most of the money, and I appreciate Supervisor Curse for donating your money, because that's what we do. It is public service and I appreciate, and I want to do public service, I don't have to get paid for it. But it disturbs me that it was on the agenda prior to the election, then after election, it came off the agenda. So if somebody can tell me something about that, then...
Yeah, Dr. Stewart, I will speak to that. Because of the transition, certain managers, interim managers handle agendas differently. I can tell you that before Mr. Gossett came on, I did not have any input in placing items on the agenda. This agenda was put up for public display on a Friday evening. I asked interim manager at that time, Mr. Vernau, why that was placed on the agenda. He indicated it was placed on the agenda because the board was permitted to take action on it since 2024 and they had not taken action. So he thought that we might want to bring it up for consideration. The majority of the board did not want to consider that pay increase and it was removed from the agenda.
That's, that's, that's what confused me and I'm sure confused others. I don't want to appear like, you know, we're coming in here and we wanting to raise, we wanting this, we wanting that. That's not it. We're all here to serve.
The prior board could have considered this at any time in 2024 and 2025 as well.
Right, so...
And I think the future board should consider this. I do think that the time value that you're putting in, that every supervisor puts into this position, is way more than the $8,800 that is being proposed to raise it to. I just think that you should consider it, the future board should consider it at a time when it's appropriate for them to consider for the next term.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Packer, please.
I just wanted to make a comment because I was at most, maybe I might have missed one budgetary meeting. So is it in the budget?
No, sir.
Right, so it's budgeted for what it currently is, correct?
Approximately $5,000 a supervisor.
So that is in your proposed budget and which will be voted on next week to make that a final?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and we do not have a second. Is there a second for Supervisor Thompson's motion? Okay, there is not, so the motion fails. Is there any other board comments at this time?
Ms. McCormick?
Madam Chairman, I was appointed to this board last January. When I was appointed, I was appointed unanimously by the then-members of the Board. I was the junior member of the Board of Supervisors. I anticipated a pretty quiet term as a supervisor, being that there were four supervisors who were, had experience and had been serving for a long period of time. That was not the circumstances that I was presented with upon taking the oath of office. Rapid fire after I was appointed, we had three supervisors resign and I and Supervisor Thompson, at least initially, were left with the chore, the responsibility, the obligation to reconstruct the Board of Supervisors. I fulfilled my obligation and my responsibility to the best of my ability. Despite a number of people making comments about the way it was handled, sometimes very loudly, I am proud that I honored my oath and did the best I could to reconstruct this Board of Supervisors. I will tell you this, I'm very proud of the people that we added to the Board since I was nominated and took the oath unanimously, approved and took the oath of office in January. Since that period of time, we not only lost supervisors who resigned, giving this Board a significant problem with trying to conduct our business, but we also replaced the, we lost our Assistant Township Supervisor, our Township, or excuse me, Assistant Township Manager, Township Manager, Finance Director, several other key positions. Despite and perhaps against all odds, this Board of Supervisors has done a fantastic job. We replaced the manager with, I think, a very high-quality candidate. We replaced the supervisor, and I don't want to embarrass either gentleman who are here, but these are fine men who are going to do a fantastic job for the township. There were a lot of roadblocks to our success, but I think this year has been a great success. There was an election in November and the four of us who were appointed as interim supervisors were not elected. The will of the people. The votes were cast, the votes were counted, we're going to have a new Board of Supervisors in January. As I said previously, I'll say again, I wish them the best of luck. One of the things, and I mean that sincerely, that's not, that's not anything other than genuine feelings. I agree with Supervisor Thompson, by the way. There's no way the compensation for this job is fair. But you're not doing it for the compensation you do. It has been my honor to serve my friends and family in this township. It has been a great privilege for me to serve. And I would, I would just say that I wish everyone on the Board of Supervisors the very best of luck. I truly enjoyed my time serving here. I will tell you that I was disappointed in the outcome of the election because I did want to continue serving. But I'll leave you with this thought. My tenure as supervisor was short, but I was introduced and met many people who I didn't know prior to becoming a supervisor. A couple of those people were Bill Bostic and Joe Gillaway, who run a little news service and podcast in the township. And if you've not listened to the This and That podcast, you should. At any rate, I was interviewed in one of those meetings prior to the election and Joe Gillaway said something to me that I agreed with at the time, but I think it's even more important to state now. He said to me, he said, you know, the people who are the supervisor are not so important. What's important is what's best for the township itself, what's best for the citizens and the people who live here in the township. And I wholeheartedly agree. So to the new board, I tell you that while this board is, majority of us are leaving, I'm sure Supervisor Thompson will keep you all informed. I want you to know that at any time, in any place, if I can be of any help to any of you, please reach out. I'd be more than happy to help you in any way that I can. And I just want to thank the citizens and the previous board for appointing me and the citizens for allowing me to serve. Again, it has been my honor and my great privilege to serve as a member of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McCormick. Any other comment at this time? We do have one more meeting, so I'll reserve my... We do have one more meeting, so I'll reserve my comments till the next meeting. Okay, moving on to Managers' Report. Mr. Gossett?
No report, just, I'm just shy of one month here full-time. And it's been a true pleasure drinking from the water hose that is, or the fire hose that has been poured upon me. But what a great township, what a great staff. And so far, I'm just continuing to learn a lot. So continue with your phone calls and your guidance and your advice. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gossett. Moving on to our action items. Item 8A, which is old business, and it's an action to retroactively approve the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority. Supervisor Thompson?
Yes, bills have been reviewed with the various department heads. I've reviewed the Township Board of Supervisors bill, excuse me, check register, the check register for sewer board, and the check-on-demand check register. So I'm making a motion according to Section 704 of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Second-Class Township Code to pay the bills. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item 9A, which is an action to approve application for payment number four for Centennial Acres Park and Cole Memorial Parks for the court improvements. Mr. Gossett, anything you'd like to add?
The amount, the amount that is being requested right now has been approved by the architects, $152,424, leaving a remaining contract bill to be billed at $190,072.23 of the 500, of the original $573,457 contract.
Thank you, Mr. Gossett, and that payment is being made to SLC Excavating. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the application for payment number four for Centennial Acres and Cole Memorial Park Court Improvements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any public comment or discussion on the payment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to item 9B, which is an action to award a contract for Colonial Road Corridor Traffic Signal Improvements.
Yes, as my understanding, this was brought up during the budget workshop. This project provides upgrades to the Colonial Road signal system, improving traffic flow and pedestrian safety near Route 39. Funding is provided through two state programs, the ARLE and the Greenlight Go Grants, covering up to 80% of the eligible costs. Construction and final engineering are expected to conclude in June 2026. And the Township's match represents 20% of the share and contingency allowed for the field adjustments.
Okay, and that award, that contract is being awarded to her signal and lighting company, that's correct?
Her signal, that is correct.
And Mr. Hall, has your office reviewed the contract?
Yes, we have.
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion to award the contract to her signal and lighting for the Colonial Road Corridor Traffic Signal Improvements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Supervisor James.
We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, so we have a properly made motion and a second. Any public discussion, comment, questions at this time? Mr. Jaroslawski is here as well, if there's any questions. Mr. Miller, please briefly.
I had asked, where did they get the information to make these recommendations? I didn't see anything on the webpage asking for the input of the people that use that road heavily. Again, we all have our unique perceptions of what should be done and could be done. Yet, are they going to meet the standards? And again, did they go back and incorporate the recommendations appended in 2005? None of which, any of those recommendations were done on Colonial Road, which have greatly improved the traffic flow there. So, I mean, where did they come from? There was no surveys or anything, you know.
I'll try to answer that to the best of my ability. A little bit of this is before my time here, but I do know this project goes back two years where it was identified to replace the signal at King George and Colonial. It is a full replacement, full signals, poles, cabinet, detectors for the intersection. And then, once everything's installed, obviously, fresh blacktop at the intersection as well. The next intersection, a little further north, will get a new, I believe it's a cabinet upgrade to help with the timing of that signal as well, so they kind of communicate a little bit better. So I can obviously dig a little deeper, find into the, more of the background as to how this was identified, if those questions still exist.
Thank you, Mr. Jaroslawski. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other public comment or question on this action item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and our final item is item 9C, which is the authorization to purchase equipment in 2025 using 2026 budgeted appropriations to secure 2025 pricing and achieve cost savings. Mr. Jaroslawski, please. Sorry, Mr. Gossett.
Sorry, no.
Mike, if you want to give the summary, if you have it in front of you, and then if there's any questions, I'll.
Sure. For your information, I generally wouldn't do this and bring something before the Board before the budget is approved, but we have an opportunity to purchase a piece of equipment, to replace a piece of equipment that was damaged during the snowstorm last Tuesday. It was rear-ended, and it is placed on the sidelines for about the next 300 days. We don't want to be out this asset throughout the winter months, leaving a gap in our plowing. So there is a piece of equipment that was used as a demo sitting on SEI's property right now that they've reserved for us for a day. If we approve this, we will have a vehicle and a full complement of vehicles that will be handling snow plowing this year. And, you know, unsure what we would do with the repaired piece of equipment. We'd probably like to hold on to it. But at the end of the day, if the supervisors require us to sell it, certainly we will use the proceeds to cover the cost of this as well. So it's being proactive at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gossett. Mr. Jaroslawski, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Just to add, so obviously, repair of this piece of equipment is expected to take upwards of 300 days. That's going to reduce our snow removal and salting capabilities within some of these tighter neighborhoods by about 20%. So this is kind of a unique opportunity to basically procure this vehicle. We won't take ownership until January. The vehicle won't be registered in the township's name until January, so there'll be no confusion, no audit issues. The dealership will hold this vehicle for us, and it's going to provide us some capability right out of the gate in the middle of the winter season.
What is our cost savings if we commit to it now?
Committing to it now, so bottom line, every, this specific vehicle is fully equipped. It's a demo vehicle with this upfitter that they have on the lot for sale. There's other municipalities ready to go after this vehicle as well. All vehicles will go up, you know, January 1st is kind of the trend that we see. If we were to order this vehicle fresh from the dealership and the upfitter on January 1st, we wouldn't be able to probably have it in-house for a good, you know, 300 days. A lot of that is just the construction of the dump boxes. The salt spreaders that we put on the back of them are on that 300-day back order. So it's a pretty unique opportunity. This vehicle won't be there for much longer.
I think what Supervisor Thompson is referring to as well is like, next Tuesday, when the budget is passed, we have another two or three vehicles. We're going to ask them to order in 2025 to capture 2026, or to capture savings in 2025, because we're seeing 8% to 10% increases in vehicles if we order them in 2026. So if you're looking at a $140,000, $150,000 vehicle, do that 8% to 10%, you can see the significant savings that we would see by just ordering it a week earlier or two weeks earlier than if we waited till January 1st to order that in 2026.
Thank you.
Director Jaroslawski and also Manager Gossett, I applaud your initiative for doing it, for trying to get this done in an appropriate manner. I appreciate your concern for our citizens. You don't know when the next snowstorm is going to be here. Not having the equipment is a risk we shouldn't allow to exist. So I compliment you both on your initiative in bringing this to the Board early so that we might be able to solve that problem before it becomes a problem.
Thanks, Supervisor.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with that. It was an unfortunate event that happened on December 2nd, but this is exactly why we have you two. You think on your feet, and we appreciate you. Okay, so I will ask for a motion to authorize the purchase of this equipment in 2025 using 2026 budgeted appropriations to secure that pricing savings.
So moved. Second.
All right, is there any public comment or discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are there any announcements from the Board? Supervisor Thompson?
I do have an announcement. I would encourage you all to go out into the hallway right behind this room and enjoy the children's art that was created at the Fall Fest. It's now framed and hung up, so be sure to go out there and appreciate what the Lower Paxton Township children have drawn.
Thank you, Supervisor Thompson. Just want to make a note, I think everybody knows this who's on Facebook or paying attention, that we do have a wonderful event this weekend, the Chris Kendall Market, which is put on by our Lower Paxton Community Foundation. It's on Saturday morning. It starts at 10:00 a.m. The events for the day can be found on their Facebook page, so please come out if you can. It is a wonderful event. And I know that our prior supervisors and our supervisor-elect have been a significant part of that event in prior years, so we'd love to see you there. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. I will just make a note that we have our next Board meeting, which is our final Board meeting of the year to adopt the final budget, and that will be December 16th at 7:00 p.m. So at 8:06 p.m., I will adjourn the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for December 9th. Thanks, everybody.